Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. This meeting of the City Planning Commission will begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as an advisory board to the City Council. It is the responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. Actions taken tonight on conditional use permits are final unless appealed to the City Council in writing within five days, and any actions taken tonight on initial development plans, alternative plans, or minor amendments are final. Any recommendations made on preliminary subdivision plan requests tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the third council meeting of this month or at the first council meeting of the next month if associated with a rezoning or major amendment. Any recommendations made on rezoning requests, major amendments, future land use amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the first council meeting of next month. Council meetings are held the first three Tuesdays at 7:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the Commission's consent agenda, planning staff in the Planning Commission apply the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the shape Sioux Falls 2040 comprehensive plan. Second, planning staff recommends approval of the request. Third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the Sioux Falls zoning ordinance. By approving the consent agenda, the Commission is approving the items on consent. Therefore, upon approval of the agenda, those members of the public in attendance for those items are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed for each item. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on that item, second, the petitioner or representative will be requested to come forward to make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner has spoken, anyone from the audience who wishes to address the agenda item shall be recognized. Then the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission move to the podium microphone to identify themselves for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes and focus on new testimony not already presented. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask that you please either turn off or silence your electronic devices. This meeting is being televised on CityLink and will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Friday at 7:00 PM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation.
Let's call this meeting of the Sioux Falls Planning Commission to order for February 7th, 2018. Again, just to highlight a couple of things you heard on the introductory video, please silence your electronic devices out of respect for everybody else in the audience. And we do look forward to hearing from each person that would like to come forward and speak. Please come forward as you are recognized and limit your comments to no more than five minutes and focus on new testimony not already presented. With that, I think we need to hear the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item one, approval of January 3rd, 2018, minutes of regular meeting. Item two, January Platts. Item three, 7972, 2018, rezone from the I-1 Light Industrial District to the C-4 Commercial Regional District for loud forms located at the southeast corner of East Benson Road and I-29. Item four, 7973, 2018, rezone from the C-2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District to the C-3 Commercial Community District located at the southwest corner of East 18th Street and South Darrell Place. Item five, 7975, 2018, rezone from the RD-1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District to the University Hills POPUD for loud forms located at 5600 West University Trail. Item six, 7978, 2018, rezone from the C-3 Commercial Community District to the C-4 Commercial Regional District for loud forms located at 3015 South Minnesota Avenue. Item seven, 7980, 2018, rezone from the I-1 Light Industrial and C-3 Commercial Community Districts to the I-1 Light Industrial and C-3 Community Districts for loud forms located at the northeast corner of West 12th Street and South Marion Road. Item eight, 7981, 2018, rezone from the AG Agriculture District to the S-2 Institutional Campus PUD for loud forms located east of North Benson Road and south of West 54th Street. Item nine, 7876, 2017, preliminary subdivision plan for Dalco Edition located south of East 57th Street and west of South Highway 11. Item 10, 7877, 2017, preliminary subdivision plan for North Ridge Edition located west of North Career Avenue and south of West 34th Street North.
Thank you, Denise. Staff, do we have any requests to move any of these to the regular agenda? Is there anyone on the Commission who would like to see any of these moved to the regular agenda? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to see one of these items, 1 through 10, moved to the regular agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All of those people who are here for items 1 through 10 may now leave if you would wish, or you may stay at your will. Next item is number 11.
Need to approve the regular agenda first, please.
So we do. Is there a motion to approve the regular agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the regular agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Item 11, 7954, 2017, conditional use permit for an electronic message center within a residential zoning district located at 4100 South Bonson Avenue.
Good evening. Jason Bieber representing Planning and Building Services. This is an application by the Abiding Savior Free Lutheran Church. It's located at the southeast corner of East 49th Street and South Bonson Avenue. The applicant is proposing to place a 24.81 square foot electronic message center sign board on the northwest corner of the existing church. The overall dimensions of the proposed wall signage is 68 inches by 97 inches for a total of 45.81 square feet. The submitted site plan indicates the one-sided 45.81 square foot sign, as you can see in the picture here, on the northwest corner of the building, and this would be adjacent to 49th and Bonson. Numerous churches within the Sioux Falls have installed electronic message center signs and situated along Garterial or Collector Streets. The proposed EMC wall sign will be located on two of these collectors, 49th Street and South Bonson Avenue. It will be located approximately 100 feet from the nearest residential zoning district. Based on the proposed ordinance change and previous approvals that Planning Commission and City Council have done, staff is recommending approval of this electronic message center sign. However, we would say that we would request approval of no more than 30% of the allowable square footage for a maximum of 15 square feet, which is less than the 24.81 they are requesting. Further, we would also add another condition. We would request that this sign have to be turned off from the hours of 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the Commission? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Jason. Is the petitioner here? Come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Jerry Burdis. Needing that personal address or the church?
Either one you prefer.
Okay. The church's address is 4100 South Bonson Avenue in Sioux Falls.
Okay. Do you have any other additional comments beyond those that Jason outlined?
No, I guess the only thing I would share with you guys is, or you folks, is that this was all just, it was kind of the brainchild of a private donor. It's not something that the church originated. We had had an individual within our congregation who thought it would be a good idea to simply have a messaging center or sign to help to inform people about our daycare, preschool, and after-school programs that we have at our church, in addition to obviously just general worship information times. So it was at his bequest that we started this.
And how would you feel about the conditions that staff recommended in a limitation of, I think it was 15 square feet, and limitation of time from shutting off the sign from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM? Or 6:00 AM? I couldn't remember.
In terms of the time, that doesn't bother us at all. I mean, I would be happy to have it shut down at 10 o'clock in the evening and not turn on until 7:00 or 8:00 in the morning. I think our private donor, his only concern was that because it sits back from the street so far compared to other signs around town, that if it's reduced too much, that it may not be as visible for people to read. To be honest with you, I don't know how, I haven't shared with him all of this information. I don't know how he would react if the size is reduced. He may decide to just withdraw his support. I don't know at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the Commission?
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this item? Come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kim Mayer. I live at 7545 South Grand Arbor Place here in Sioux Falls, and I'm here on behalf of Daktronics, the manufacturer of the proposed sign. If we can look at that first one. This is an image of Abiding Savior that I took from Google Earth, and the yellow arrow shows you where the proposed sign would be located, and as you can see, it's on the corner directly facing the intersection of Bonson and 49th, so it does not face straight onto the two homes that are across the street, and I think that's important to note. If we can look at the second one. This is the old sign now, and this is the same spot where the proposed sign would be. And as you can see, we're looking at about 56, 57 feet from the sign to the curb. And now lettering on a sign from this distance, we get into the importance of the size so that it's readable from passersby. So if we can look at the third one, we've got a chart there that talks about the size of lettering and the ideal readable distance. And as you can see, when we're getting to the 50, 60-foot range, the desired letter height would be five to six inches. So keeping this in mind, let's take a look at that next one. This is the First Reformed Church at 57th and Toma. Now, this church was allowed to have a larger sign, and you can see that it is closer to the road than this proposed sign would be, and it's also directly across from a home. On the prior chart, we talked about letter sizes, and looking at this sign again, you can see that they're using a good-sized font, and you can see on there, if we can take another peek back at that prior one. Actually, the one right underneath the chart there. Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
You can see that they've got a good-sized font, so it's quite legible and it's easy to read if you were passing by. So basically, to be an effective sign, the sign needs to be read easily in a minimal amount of time. With a smaller sign, the church is then going to be forced to use a smaller font, which tends to put us back...
tends to put us back, can we go back to that one side of the signs? Then if we're forced to use a three- or four-inch letter height, then we're looking at an ideal readable distance, back three to 40 feet. And also with a smaller sign, you're forcing the sign owner to use not only the smaller font, but maybe squeezing information in, making it less legible, a little bit more difficult to read, and less pleasing to look at, and ultimately less beneficial to the sign owner. And lastly, I do want to mention brightness. If the city's desire to reduce the digital displays down to 30% is because of a concern over brightness, keep in mind that the city already has appropriate brightness language in the code. It requires that electronic signs come equipped with automatic dimming controls that automatically dim the signs according to surrounding ambient light, and the code also requires that displays not exceed .3-foot candles above ambient light when measured at a preset distance depending on the size of the sign. So I think it's important to stress that a larger sign does not mean a brighter sign. A lighter sign would still need to comply with the code, and based upon this information, I would urge you to approve the larger sign size for Abiding Savior. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any questions from the commission? Hearing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the audience who would like to speak to this item? Come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Charlie Christensen. I live at 4004 South Tuscany Court. I'd just like to start and say I have nothing against the church. My daughter attended daycare there when she was younger, and she goes to church there still to this day. And I would just like to say I feel like there's modern technology today. There's plenty of ways to advertise besides putting the sign in people's backyards. With technology today, there's a million ways to show what they're interested in showing to people versus, you know, putting a sign in the backyard, you know? You can Google pretty much anything these days, and it's not like people don't know there's a church there. So I don't think it's really good for the people who live in that area to have a sign in the presence, going through their windows when the streetlights shine through our windows already. And I feel during rush hour, there's plenty of people running that four-way stop sign in the morning and after work, so just imagine what would happen when you put up more things to look at there. So I just, I'm just against it, and I feel like there's plenty of other ways to advertise these days. That's all I have.
Okay. Any questions from the commission? Okay, thank you. Are there any other audience members who would like to address? Come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Chelsea Asmus, 4000 South Tuscany Court. I have some visual materials here as well.